Good evening, everybody. We're going to call our meeting to order today's Tuesday, June 6, 2023. This got to be closer. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcasts. We silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Hi, gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen. The United States of America, in two very public, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to start with the reorganization of the school committee. Oh, motion to formally open with a roll call. And just so the school committee knows, because Sarah is remote tonight, all votes we take this evening will need to be by roll call vote. Okay? Motion to open the meeting, please.
I'll make a motion.
Some votes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
Yes.
Mrs. Guevara?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you. And now we'll move into the third agenda item, which is the reorganization of the school committee and the election of officers, which I'll hand over to Dr. Bailey to kick off.
Okay, as you know, each year after the town election, that's when we do our reorganization and have the opportunity to elect the officers as well as the chairperson can appoint people for the various subcommittees. So at this point in time, my role will just be getting us going for a chairperson. And then, once the chair is elected, I will turn the meeting back over to the chairperson. So do I have a motion to nominate a chairperson for this year coming up?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jennifer Downing as chairperson for the school year.
Okay, motions made. Do I have a second?
Second.
This is a second. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say that Jennifer has done a very good job being our chairperson in the past. And I believe she's very organized and she communicates well with the committee. So I don't see any reason to change that. So that is why I am nominating her.
Okay, so we ready for a roll call vote? Do you accept that?
Thank you. I do accept the appointment. Okay, thank you.
So would you see the roll call vote?
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
Yes.
Mrs. Guevara?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes, thank you.
I'll turn the meeting back to you, but I just want to say, Mrs. Gomes, you've never sounded so good. Yeah, no problem.
Well, thank you. So I appreciate the appointment. Happy to continue serving in this capacity. So we're going to talk about subcommittees, which we always do at this time of year. I really feel like we're in a really good place with how our committees have been structured. I think consistency is often key, too. Sometimes, as you learn the committees, you know, you continue to make progress. So what I'd like to recommend is that we keep our committees in the same makeup as they are currently. So just to summarize that, so we currently have Sarah Gomes and John Howcroft on the budget subcommittee. On the policy subcommittee, we have Sarah Gomes as well as Ron Hood. Oh, is it? I thought Ron and Ron.
I was, but then I...
No, you are, Jen.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so I'm continuing to serve in policy. Where you were, Ron, was in negotiations. And so then, I would support negotiations as well. I would continue to serve as the mask representative as well on behalf of the school committee. Where we do have a gap is in the SMEC appointment. Mr. Tebs, our previous school committee member, was in that seat. So what I'd like to recommend is that, Melissa, if you would step into SMEC, I think that'd be a great starting point. Fantastic, great. And then, the Old Colony vocational appointment, that was May, right? We did that with the town.
No, it's the three members.
But there is an appointment, though, for the town, right?
Right, but we still have our own subcommittee, which was Ron, John Tebs, myself.
Yep, I'm going to get to confirm. So if you Sarah Gomes, John Howcroft, and Jonathan Tebs, well, it would be Melissa, right? If you're willing. So yeah, we need to talk about that because that's a void with Mr. Tebs. So how do you feel about that?
I can explain a little bit about that.
Do you want to say a few words, Sarah, about your experience on that committee?
Yeah, so basically, the committee meets with the Board of Selectmen when it's time to nominate and vote for our representative. So basically, there's a meeting, I think it's every year in April to nominate a person, Melissa. So there's not a lot of work with this. You show up at the Board of Selectmen meeting and we discuss who the nomination is. And it's basically a half an hour of your time. The person that we have right now is really good. I've heard good things about him. And so unless there's somebody new that wants to enter in there, there's not a lot of discussion about it.
And I think the other representative, his name is Justin Bridor.
Yep.
And he has done, for one, I've heard, a very, very good job in that seat. Okay, great. So there's no vote necessary to maintain in these committees. So if everybody is in agreement, then we can look forward. All right, so with that done, we will move into the approval of minutes, payroll, and warrants.
We're going to nominate vice chair.
Oh, vice chair, that's right.
Which would mean, do I have to do that?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think aligned with what we've been talking about. I think, Sarah, I'd like to suggest you maintain in your role as vice chair. Are you comfortable with that?
I am, if I'm nominated and seconded.
I don't think it has to be voted, right?
I think that one does.
An officer does, okay. So then, I would like to make a motion to appoint Sarah Gomes or to keep her in her seat as vice chair of the school committee. Make a motion. Do you have a second? Okay, second?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Hood as vice chair.
All right. So we already had a motion on the table with a second. So do we have a second?
I guess I could second it, right?
Sure.
I'll second.
All right, so we have two motions on the table and two seconds. So let's have a discussion about that. So do you want to comment, Mr. Howcroft?
Yes, since I made the motion. Historically, the operations of the school committee have been rotating chairs every year and rotating vice chairs every year. This is the first time I've seen, probably in the history, of seeing chairs not being dispersed between, and having all members having a chance at leadership.
I think it's a precedent that was set at the school committee. I mean, it's a, we have actually, this is not the first time because this will be my third term as chair. So, but I think in the past, you're right. I think there has been a tradition in this school committee to change every year.
That was over six years ago, Jen.
Right, which we discussed a few years ago that we were moving in a different direction around consistency. But we can certainly have a discussion if we want to go back to rotating chairs, you know, in the future.
Not future, no. I think by having a change, no question about the performance of the past vice chair. That's not the question. Question is, we should have a rotation and build it in to it now rather than another year. So therefore, it does, we may want it to, you know, it gives an opportunity to be here and maybe in another direction.
Sure.
This is a possibility that I'm raising, you know, for this committee to accept, you know, to consider.
Sure, I appreciate that. Any other comments?
I'm a little confused with how this went. So we have a first and a second. Are we supposed to have a discussion after that and then a vote and then another motion? How are we doing this correctly?
I'm not sure how that works because we already had a motion and a second on the table. So I'm actually not sure.
Point of order, I think, Madam Chair, that the nominations have been made and now is the time and you allowed a period of comment. Now is the time that, you know, we vote. So make a motion that we move to the election of officers.
And I would like, Ron, I would like an opportunity for you to weigh in with comment as how you feel about moving into a vice chair position.
Yeah, I was surprised by the nomination, to be honest. And I seconded it so I could hear Mr. Howcroft's comment. So it's not a reflection of my necessarily desiring the chair or any comment on Mrs. Gomes' performance. So I just wanted to hear John's commentary. But I would certainly accept it. But I think it's, I guess I would also be curious from the others to hear their comments around the idea of a rotation.
Right. Yeah. Listen, I think Sarah has done a great job as vice chair. She's also held the seat of chair in the past. And Ron, I think you've been an exceptional school committee member. So, you know, I really feel like we would be in great hands in either position, having you serve in vice chair position or Sarah. So I really am supportive of the group. And either way, I'd be really happy to support. I think there is something to having consistency around those roles changing every year. It's, oh, year goes by really quickly. So I'm, I don't, not sure I'm totally in favor of every year switching. And certainly, other school districts don't switch every year. They're, you know, like, there are multiple-year terms that other schools uphold. So I just think that's a matter of our preference going forward, what we think is good practice for this committee.
Madam Chair, I remind you, first of all, that the Board of Selectmen rotate their chairs every year.
Sure.
And so it has been a past practice for this body to do the same up to very recent time. And I think we should go back to rotating them. So therefore, we'll, other people have an opportunity to develop experience and administrative insight and so forth and continuing on relying on one or two people.
Yes, and I also think, Mr. Howcroft, there has to be a willingness to serve in that role. Not everyone has had a willingness to serve in the chair role, which can take a lot of time and commitment. So I think that is also important to consider as well. But I completely respect and hear you about positioning new leadership and so people can get experience and serve. I'm all supportive of that, yeah. So let's take a vote. Okay, so, but I'm not sure with the two. Kelly, can you advise on with two motions and two seconds on the table?
It seems that Mr. Howcroft's motion defeated the main motion.
Okay.
The main motion to move the question.
Yeah, so I think he would have to withdraw or modify the...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
So I believe he would have to withdraw or modify the main motion to put Ron's on the table.
Okay, so Mr. Howcroft's second motion basically takes the first off the table.
Yeah, so it said amendment must be related to the main motion's intent and cannot be phrased in a way that would defeat the main motion.
Okay.
I heard a question, excuse me. That was the to move for vote. That was my motion.
Right, but there was a motion on the floor already.
With a second already. So I'm trying to understand the process of how we proceed.
So if you are the fifth vote, so are we, if you're such a view on how you want to, you know, add a motion or not?
Right, I think we should take a vote on the first motion that was at hand.
Yeah.
Yes, that was the first motion at hand with a second.
Do you stake that motion?
So the motion was to appoint Sarah Gomes as vice chair of the school committee. There was a second on the table and now we can vote on that motion, whether people feel yes or no.
Right.
That's one way of doing it, other than that two people have been nominated and people cast a ballot for whomever of the two that they wish.
I think we're taking a vote on the first motion and second that we had on the table. Now, you can vote against that if you choose to, but we've got to move through that motion, is what I'm hearing from Mrs. Benavides.
Right.
So let's do that and see what the outcome is of that vote. So we're going to take a roll call vote on the first motion.
Correct, okay. So this is to, this is for Mrs. Gomes to be...
Right, vice chair.
Yes. So Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
I'll vote for Sarah, yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
No.
Mrs. Guevara?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
So the yeses have it?
Yes. So now, but I will say, I think having others move into leadership positions on the board, I'm completely supportive of. If Ron would, I think it's a great idea that we consider in the future. Your point, Mr. Howcroft, we can totally consider rotating again in the old practice that we had. I think that's something we should continue us, so. All right. So now, we are going to move into approval of minutes, payroll, and warrants. If I could have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of May night, 2023.
Some votes.
Second.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
Yes.
Mrs. Guevara?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
I could also request a motion of approval, please, for payroll and warrants.
I'll make a motion. I'll second that.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
Yes.
Mrs. Guevara?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anyone on delegation this evening? Sign up for delegation. Thank you. Full business. We're going to talk about Old Colony VTEC admissions policies.
Sure. First, I just want to welcome you to our meeting, Mrs. Guevara. Welcome to today, welcome. At the last school committee meeting, I think it was John who asked about the Old Colony Regional VTEC admissions policies.
Yes.
And I did include them. So there's a whole packet within your packet that reviews those policy, the admission policies, to this election criteria, et cetera. So it is in your packet for your review. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I would like to know John's perspective on it. Does he agree with everything that's in there?
Yes, it's something like, you know, we don't accept it policy. The question I have, have they changed it this year?
I don't think so.
That was a question.
I think this is what they've had.
You know, because a lot of vocational schools are going through a change in the admissions policy, you know, procedures, really, of policies. And I wanted, so I was wondering if there had been any changes. And then, a second question, if there were any changes that would turn, that we have to take a look at maybe what they are really looking for in acceptance of students and whether we should alter our curriculum in some sense in order to prepare, you know, students for that type of process. So that was the reason why I raised that issue. Because I'm more aware of what other vocational schools are doing. And I don't know if it's a mandate through the state board of vocational or is it from, you know, decided by local boards, vocational boards.
So the vocational placement, I have that it was adopted in January of 2006 and it was amended three times since, February of 2018, August of 2021, and June of 2022. So I think that's the last change, was June of 2022. But I'm not aware, and I can certainly find out for sure, but I'm not aware of any major changes with the admissions policy. As far as acceptance of students in our curriculum, we prepare all of our students with the state standards for all of the high schools, whether it's New Bedford, Fairhaven, Old Colony, Stang, Bristol-Aggie. So we would not necessarily be looking to make a change to go away from the standards. We would continue that. And we continue to work closely with all of the superintendents of those high schools, including Old Colony.
Though it's not within our domain, so to speak, but if had the Vocational, you know, Old Colony changed the policy, say, similar to what Greater New Bedford Vocational, then there'd be the second question whether it would have to increase their supportive services in order to maintain, you know, their high level of, you know, durability, so to speak, of youngsters remaining in the school. So that was, you know, that was one of the questions, you know, I would raise if there were a change and went with this Greater New Bedford Vocational type of policies. You know, for the, you know, for people's, it seems to be that, you know, the new ones that have been advocated, like, say, Greater New Bedford, are basically not as merit-based in the sense of, you know, youngsters, you know, with high attendance rates and, you know, and good behavior, whatever is in there. It's more geared for the later bloomers, students, that may be, there's the C-average types and then therefore will excel in later on. But we, so therefore, that's why, you know, changes are being made. And I was wondering if the Vocational School, Old Colony, had followed the same. So that was my question.
Sure, my understanding is that New Bedford Vocational now has a lottery system in addition to the merit system so that more students would have a chance at getting in and not just those top-scoring kids. And now there's an actual lottery. To my knowledge, I don't think there's a lottery at Old Colony. I think they still go by the criteria that they set forth in this packet. But I'm going to see Mr. Polanski tomorrow, actually, at one of my meetings. I can certainly raise the issue and just double-check with him that if there's, you know, any intentions of moving towards a lottery system. But when I asked him the last time, he said no, it was...
Yeah, the parents may want to know if there were a change, you know, for even their, you know, their children apply. It's like it's a change game, maybe. So I think I've spoken enough on that issue.
Okay, full business. And we're moving into Superintendent, Dr. Bailey's report.
So within your packet for the personnel report, since last month, we had one resignation and one termination. Any questions? Seeing none, move on. Within the budget process, we approved a position for a central office administrative assistant. And one of the functions of the school committee is to approve the job description. So I would be asking for a vote. The job description is within your packet, but I would be asking for a vote tonight so that we can actually advertise and get someone hired for this position.
Are there any questions? I'm going to transition. This position's already been determined that we're hiring someone for, like, last evening. Yes, this is part of, this was approved as part of the budget, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do we need a moment just to review any details before we...
Dr. Bailey, is no changes in this job description from anything we talked about previously?
No changes with anything we talked about, just to let, just to be transparent. This is a new position. So the job description is new and slightly different than some of the other administrative assistants within the district.
If I could have, if I could request a motion, please, to approve the central office administrative assistant job description?
Some votes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Take the roll call vote. Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
Yes.
Mrs. Guevara?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call Mr. Missler up with his monthly technology update for us.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Madam Chair, school committee members, Dr. Bailey. I'll try to make this quick. We've got some exciting things happening in technology at the end of the year. Quick one, everyone here is probably used to the Chromebook collection. We're doing that now, fast and furiously. We've kind of left it to the last week to let them have devices as long as possible. That's going smooth. We are currently working with the business manager on year-end spend-down for our projects that were coming up. And Mr. McIntyre can talk about more of that later. Data collection, I've talked about this almost every meeting. It's a lovely thing, but it's upon us. And we're keeping up with a few of the changes. One of them is, I think, the CRDC has a bunch of changes. We've been working with all departments as well. We're providing how-tos and processes to make things smoother and more efficient in the district. One thing that we found that's really kind of helpful is those how-tos. I've said that pretty much every meeting. But what's happening here is, we actually see it in our data now. We're seeing some really good quality data that we can rely on. We've worked with the AES leadership to have, for the first time, of having our report cards online for the parent portal this year. There are more to come out from that soon. They're also going to be doing paper copies, just so no one's scared about that. But we're going to try and do both this year to see how that goes. And also, we're hoping to drive more parents to the parent portal so that way they can see their students' data more effectively and quicker. Middle School actually already does this, so we're kind of just mirroring what they're doing. For projects, we have a few projects in the works. We have that infrastructure project that was voted on, which passed, which was fantastic. We're doing the phones and touchfuses this year. We'll report back on more of that as we progress. Summer is coming. So our goal in the summer is to finish up some of the housekeeping that we have, update and assess every single system that we have here. And for instance, we have some bad data jacks here. We're going to try and go through and relabel things as much as possible just to make it more efficient for us and the technicians to take care of things throughout the school year. The other part of the summer is, a lot of people think teachers, you think summertime off. This is actually our crunch time. Our crunch time for summer is to make sure that our equipment is perfect to take on next year's wild and heavy usage. So that's kind of our goal, is to make sure everything's perfect for the next school year. And really, that's kind of what we've got going on. Does anybody have any questions for us, concerns, thoughts? All right.
I just want to thank you for the enormous amount of work that you've accomplished in your department since you've joined us in the district. It's been unbelievable, the inventory itself and all of the projects that have been accomplished. I mean, kudos to you and your staff.
Yes, well done, second that for sure.
I underscore your comments.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we really care a lot about our school culture and climate, and, you know, that was one of my goals this year, a sense of belonging, actually over the past two years. And that's something we're going to continue with. There's definitely areas of strength, but there's also areas that we need to continue to work on and next steps. So I would call up Ms. Rigary, Curriculum Director, and the building principals.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. So we're presenting tonight about sense of belonging in the school district, student sense of belonging. So a sense of belonging is really crucial for students' well-being and academic success. We know that when students, there's a lot of data, there's a lot of studies, that when students are feeling connected to the community in which they're learning, they're more motivated, they're more confident, and they're more engaged in the work that's happening in the schools. And since the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we started using anonymous surveys to gauge students' sense of belonging in the district. And this year, we started using the Panorama Survey, which is a national, it's a survey that's available nationally, and it's, it's nice because we can break down information by demographics and compare to other schools across the nation. And so the survey, what we're looking at is students' sensible, how students are feeling about safety, mindset, teacher-student relationships, school climate, belonging, and engagement. And in addition to these anonymous surveys, we have also, with the feedback that we've received, there were times when we felt we needed to dig a little deeper into the feedback that we were getting from students, so we've held focus groups with students as well. This ties into the district's strategic initiatives, the pillar of creating thriving social and emotional learning experiences for all students. And we've got two standards listed there for the initiatives.
I'm going to turn the mic over to Mrs. Sylvia, the Ford Middle School Principal.
Can I just ask one quick question about your focus groups that you're running? Do students want to participate in these, or is it kind of like pulling teeth?
Oh, no.
Are you?
They like, they like to. They come to my conference room, and I have snacks. But we do it in a very non-threatening, fun way. We've got chart paper all around on the walls. They get to go around and participate in that way. So if they don't feel comfortable speaking, they can do it on the chart paper. But then after that, this is the way we did it last time. We had a discussion, and believe me, they are not shy to tell us what they think. It was great.
And do you mix grades, or you keep the grades?
We do all middle school, right?
Right, we did, we did, did we do a five, six, or, yeah, we did a five and six, and then a seven and an eight. So the lower middle school and the upper middle school. Yeah, that's great.
And we're going to move over next to the elementary school. The kids love to share their thoughts. And get a lot more anecdotal information than just the survey information. Really start digging deep into these questions. What did you mean by, and then they kind of just tell you what they're thinking. It was very interesting.
And they did have the focus group right after I put out the memo about no crocs at P.E. They were very upset about that. But then when explaining why, because it could cause an injury, we know, we know, but can we wear them?
They look cool.
They do. They were in sport mode. So our area, we have three areas of focus at FMS, school engagement, school belonging, and school climate. So on the next set of slides, so the fifth grade actually participated in the three-to-five survey, so we had to tease that data out. And then middle school is six through eight, and I apologize, your slides may not match. Information is the same. So what I did was I put them both on the same slide for you, okay? I'm sorry, I'm. So you can see school engagement, quite focused. How focused are you on the activities in your classes? Forty-six students answered, forty-eight percent in grade five, as opposed to twenty-two percent. Fifty-two students in grade six through eight are quite focused or freak, oh, I apologize. How often do you get focused on activities? It's a little different question, but you can see the gist is about the same for school engagement. Sense of belonging, overall, how much do you feel like you belong at your school? Belong quite a bit, thirty-eight students in grade five, which is forty percent. Overall, how much do you feel like you belong at your school in six to eight? Belong quite a bit, eighty-two students, thirty-five percent. School climate, how positive or negative is the energy of the school? Somewhat positive, thirty-one percent, neither negative or positive, twenty-three percent. So we have a little gray area that we have to really hone in and figure out why we're not committed to positive or negative.
That's it, that the research shows that neutrality, a lot of people tend to go for that middle road sometime and not really commit one way or the other. But we can't change
No.
that survey because it's normed nationally, so we have to keep the answers just as they are.
And so in six to eight, it was twenty-nine percent neither negative or positive, but slightly positive, somewhat, and very, does add up to over a hundred students. So our areas of strength, school safety, school mindset, questions, Sarah? Oh, I, okay, I apologize. And student-teacher, school-teacher, student relationships. I just can't read that far. In grade five, if a student is bullied in school, how difficult is it for him or her to get help from an adult? Slightly difficult, not at all difficult, thirty-seven percent, not at all. Slightly difficult, forty percent, we need to work on that. If a student is bullied in school, how difficult is it for him or her to get help from a student? Slightly difficult, thirty-five, not at all difficult, twenty-one percent. School mindset, in school, how positive is it for you to change? Sorry, I'm trying to do both. How possible is it to you to change behaving well in class? Somewhat possible, the students believe it's only somewhat possible, eighteen percent for them to change. Quite possible, twenty-four, completely possible, thirty-seven. As opposed to sixth grade through eighth, twenty-nine percent completely possible, quite possible, thirty-three, somewhat possible, twenty-five percent. School-teacher, student relationships, how respectful are your teachers towards you? Quite respectful, forty-one percent in grade five, forty-nine percent in grade six through eight. So our student-centered events at Ford, monthly literacy awards, weekly Freckle Alexia awards, pep rallies with special guests, our PBIS awards, our school spirit days, the field trips, PTO events, after-school clubs, sports, social events. What we're going to do for next year, planning for next year already, is implement a daily advisory, small groups between ten to twelve students that will meet daily with one of our staff members. So I've divided upgrades five through eight into the small groups, used every certified teacher we have on staff to work on social-emotional learning, team-building, student-to-student relationships, student-to-teacher relationships. No, okay. Students in grades seven and eight will travel in groups. Before the pandemic, they did not travel in groups. With the pandemic, we traveled in groups. We're going to go back to random groupings in seven and eight. Classes in grades seven and eight will also rotate on a daily basis. Classes in grades five and six will rotate, once the students feel comfortable with their schedule. The specials will change daily. This year, they have the specials assigned to the week. We're going back to the daily specials, so pre-COVID things here.
I think that's a really good idea, to go back, to give some of that change, to prepare them for high school, and.
I have a question about that as well.
Okay. Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, sorry. So, Michelle, are we, for, for all the grades, is it, homeroom is, just like, I'm going to make this up, alphabetical, and then everybody from each grade, like, there'll be a math level, and then they'll have different kids in their next, like, science level, depending on what their scores are? Are we doing that again?
Seven and eighth, we will have the pre-algebra track, and the seventh grade will have the Algebra I class in the eighth grade, and they will be randomly mixed as much as we can in the other classes. The advisory is not alphabetical order, it is just random.
And are we doing a homeroom next year?
That's what we're going to call a homeroom advisory. So it's going to be a longer period, it's about twenty-five to thirty minutes. There will be activities, it will be structured. I already have the schedule started. Some of it will be creating your goals for the term, reflecting back on your goals, making the goals for term two, you know, developing our skills, student-to-student relationships, so they can work proactively and productively in their classes throughout the days, no matter who they are with.
So it's more, it's like win, but not really?
Exactly. So it's not like win, no.
We're not doing, we're not doing schoolwork, we're doing more social relationships.
Exactly. Daily, and it's a smaller group, and we're using everyone. So all the fifth-grade teachers, the sixth-grade teachers, the specialists, Ms. Owens in the library, Mrs. Morse, Mr. Murray's our academic coach, they're all going to have a small group to work with.
And do you think that's going to affect people's, the kids' grades, because they won't have that extra time?
Oh, we, we will have, like, we will have a block that's like the win, but this is not like that.
Okay.
Okay. Mm-hmm. We already use the Trails curriculum.
Trails, everyone's training in that?
Yes.
I think that's really great, great addition.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's, kids need it. There's just so much, a lot of charm.
Can we go back to the school belonging? Doesn't have that number, it's just nineteen percent who like completely belong there. Fourteen percent, like, we've got to change that. School is a place where they come, like, to be with their friends and things, and they feel like almost, three-quarters of the kids don't feel like they belong at school, that's a huge problem. So I don't, that has got to change, we've got to do something.
Right, so that we're hoping with the advisory and the student-to-student relationship, the teacher-to-student relationship is built in that period of consistency throughout the year.
What are we using to measure that as we go along?
Well, this is the Panorama Survey, so we did this three times a year. So next year, we'll give a BOI.
Again.
And then we'll do the middle of the year, and then we'll do the end of the year again.
So we compare it to ourselves, but we're also comparing it to national norms. We know we have a lot of work to do, like, even seven percent is a problem for me.
I don't think we care about the national norms, I care about that though.
Oh, absolutely.
This, it needs to change. That's unacceptable. We're going to do a lot of work.
Well, she just outlined.
Yeah, no, I think the, I think we, I think what you guys are proposing sounds like a really good next step to try to get these numbers in a better place.
And this is a very difficult age group.
Yes, it is.
This is not, a lot of kids don't wait to be in school at this age. You know, they can't wait to go home. We want it to be a place where they love to come to, they don't want to leave. So we're striving to have all positive feedback on these surveys and improvements as we go on.
Any other questions for Ford?
So we have a similar presentation for AES. We looked at the three areas that had the lowest scores, and I think this is similar to what the picture was over at Ford, school engagement, school, school mindset, and school climate. So these are sample questions from each of those areas. And so you can see that they were talking about how focused they are on the activities. This is just one example of one of the questions that goes into school engagement. I thought so, dear.
Sorry.
Okay. So that's school engagement. Here is a question, sample, one of the, one of the questions, not a sample question, but one of the questions that they answered on school mindset. So, you know, we have a little bit of work to do there, and for school climate. So then we looked at the areas that we feel like we're doing really well, school safety, teacher-student relationships, and sense of belonging. So safety, that you can see here, I mean, I think what was said before, when you look at the, you know, lowest number, we definitely don't want to have anyone feeling like they might be bullied online, or they think it's likely that they will be bullied online. Teacher relationships, again, it's overall very favorable. Again, this is one of the sample questions, but we don't want anyone feeling that teachers are not respectful, so we are digging into that. And here is one of those questions on school belonging. So these are some of the things that we will continue to do over at AES, Karaoke Fridays, the Alexia, and we've added to that awards for accelerated reader benchmarks, where they're basically nominated by the teachers. We have PBIS awards with special visitors. We've had a lot of success for our second year for our enrichment program. We have several, whether they're sponsored by the PTO grants or even through our, our budget, we have several assemblies throughout the year, spirit days. Every child gets a book on their birthday, and even if it's not their birthday, we have it set up, so they will get a book no matter what, and we're still celebrating their birthday. We just have to do it a little bit of ahead of time, because they're not here in the summer. We started fourth-grade ambassadors this year, and that was, can sometimes be a little mini-focus group, like Dr. Bailey had. I don't know if she, if you talked about it when you were here one time?
I was with them the other day in the library. I had the fourth-grade ambassadors, and we picked out, they picked out books to read, for read aloud, picture books, so they could read to younger children. So we didn't have an in-depth discussion about the climate, but it was more about their role as an ambassador and reading aloud to younger children and what that looks like. So we did some practicing, you know, explaining how to do a read aloud. We're prepping them to be teachers, right? So they were, they were excellent.
They also had a nice focus group with, why, recycling policies.
Oh, that's right.
That's right, too. Very passionate about recycling, the fourth-grade ambassadors are at our school. And we all have our second annual talent show as well.
So I want, I want the kids to feel like they have a voice, right? So this is a group of kids that wrote letters to us about recycling. I met with them, they gave me their ideas. We're working on things that are, that we can actually do, maybe within the cafeteria or within the school. But we did get some next steps, and if they want to meet with me again, that's no problem. But we really had a nice two-way dialogue, I thought, about recycling, and this all came from them, from the students.
It was their idea.
And I will add that I also received some letters from some very passionate fourth-grade students about recycling. And I would love to invite them to a school committee meeting to also share their concerns and ideas with us. If you guys think that would be a good idea to put on the agenda. So maybe we can arrange that. I know we're getting to the end of the school year, but soon.
Maybe they can come back as fifth graders.
They have to come back as fifth graders, I think. Yes, I would love to see them, I would love to talk to them about that again.
Yeah, that would be great, yeah. The kids do love to, to share all of their opinions. They've been doing, for example, in second grade, persuasive writing, and we've been invited in, Ms. Pacetto and I, to listen to all of their proposals and all of their rationales, and, you know, apparently they want a lot more half-days, so. Of course. Marinate on that.
Don't we all?
I'd like to propose a four-day work week, what do you think?
I'd probably propose that, too.
Now, those fourth-grade ambassadors, now they're moving into fifth grade. Is there an opportunity for them to continue to be in a leadership role as they transition into fifth grade? The, our ambassadors changed every, every trimester. So we've had, so enough people could participate in the whole leadership process. I would love to see, though, some kind of continuation. We've sometimes had buddies from fifth grade come back and read with kindergarten. I think that.
Or ambassador mentor.
Yeah, something like that. I think that would be a great way to kind of bring the kids together on both sides of the parking lot.
Two schools, one district. I love that idea, though, about them being mentors for the new ambassadors for next year. So if that's something that you want to work on, I would love that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Ms. Rigary, we do, right? I'd just be curious to see. Sure, and this is also something that we get our teachers involved in as far as looking at the data, so that, you know, they have a piece in this, you know? Everybody working hard to make those improvements. It matters to everybody.
So just to summarize, schools across the country really are looking at the student sense of belonging. This is something from when Dr. Bailey entered the district, through her listening tours, this became an important piece of the work that we've been doing as a district in the last five or six years. But the, now to have this data that comes along with it, it informs the work that we're doing, because it's hard to tell in. Um, because it's hard to tell and sometimes the data can be quite surprising. And so that piece just helps us to, um, make more informed decisions and, um, try new things. We know that there's some areas where we're growing and we know that there's definitely areas for growth. Um, and that's, you know, it, I think that the principals have some great plans in place for next year to work on the areas where we need to grow. Um, and we'll continue to monitor, as Mrs. Sylvia said, through the Panorama surveys and make sure that we're always keeping our finger on the pulse of what's, you know, what's going on so that we can make adjustments where needed. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation.
Does anybody have any other questions about that? Uh, next is my evaluation. Love to have a public evaluation. I think, uh, I think I'm the only public official that has a public evaluation, but I'm going to actually turn this over to you, Ms. Downing, to facilitate the conversation.
Okay, so my role tonight is just to share, um, a recap of the evaluation, um, outcomes. So thank you to the school committee members that did complete, um, the survey, which is all school committee members, obviously with the exception of Melissa, she's just joining us. Um, so you'll be a part of this process next time. Um, so I'm just going to read through each goal, um, and the standards and where, uh, you know, Dr. Bailey, um, was assessed. So on student, on the student learning goal, and I'll just read what that is. During the 2021 to 2023 school year, all students will receive consistent access to grade level work with targeted scaffolds and interventions to make grade level standards accessible as measured by the implementation of a district educators' goals menu with measurable goal options in the areas of literacy, mathematics, science or social studies. And with this goal, she met that goal. With professional practice goal, to develop and implement lessons and activities from the South Regional Consultancy and continue to build her capacity as an effective leader within the Acushnet Public School Districts. In this category, she met that goal. For district improvement goal number three, during the 2021-23 school years, to foster a sense of belonging and partnership among students and families as measured by student and family surveys and attendance data. And for that goal, she met the goal. For district improvement goal number four, to continue to provide a safe and healthy learning environment that prioritizes the well-being of every Acushnet school, public school's community member during the global health pandemic. And with this goal, she exceeded the goal. So now we're going to talk about standards and assess the performance there. So, uh, for standard one, which is instructional leadership, Dr. Bailey, um, was assessed as exemplary in that category. For standard two, which is management and operations, Dr. Bailey rated as proficient. For standard three, family and community engagement, once again, she was proficient. And standard four, which is professional culture, she was proficient. So Dr. Bailey's overall summative performance rating was proficient. Any discussion, comments? Okay. So, um, one of the things I'd like to do, and I don't know if I, do I need a vote to take something out of agenda order? No? Okay. So what I'd like to suggest, just because we're on the topic of Dr. Bailey's evaluation, is one of the things we were going to discuss during the executive session is, um, related to Dr. Bailey's, um, performance recognition pay, which is the P R P pay, um, which is in her, um, her contract. So, um, just to read some of the language from her contract. Doctor, superintendent shall be eligible in each contract year to receive performance recognition pay, or P R P, of up to $3,000 per contract year based upon the superintendent's attainment of specific performance objectives for the contract year set by the school committee. Such performance incentive pay shall be paid out in conjunction with her final evaluation ratings in the contract year for, contract year for which the P R P was earned. If determined as to whether and if so, to what extent or degree the quality of the superintendent has achieved the performance objectives in a given contract year, as well as the determination as to whether to grant such P R P and in what amount and shall be determined by the school committee. So we usually talk about this in executive session. We have a lot of things to talk about as it relates to school safety. So I thought I would move this into the agenda now because we're talking about performance. So what I, what we need to decide is the level of P R P. Typically in past contracts, um, Dr. Bailey has been awarded the, uh, max amount, which is the $3,000. And these have always been based on her past performance reviews. So with her, um, with her rating, uh, her overall summative performance being proficient, I'd like to recommend that we once again, um, award the $3,000 P R P that is per her contract, but we do need to take a vote on that. Um, so I'd like to offer that up as a motion. I don't know if we have a second and maybe some discussion.
I'll second that.
Did anybody make the motion?
Yes, and that, but, but now I'll open it up if there's any questions, comments, um, or further discussion.
Yep, your school committee member, you can go.
Do you abstain?
Or you can abstain, whatever you're comfortable with.
Yeah, you don't feel, yeah, I could abstain.
Whatever you're comfortable, but you can vote, you are a school committee member. So absolutely feel comfortable with what you want to do.
Man, okay, oh.
Ms. Hark, go ahead. I think I would just like to make the comment that, you know, as we've, um, discussed the superintendent contract in the past, I think we know that these kinds of clauses, just for the record, right, are quite common in terms of incentive pay. And I think we also, I think, you know, the value is certainly in line with what we would typically see. So just want to provide some assurance that what we're talking about is not outside of, you know, what's kind of the norm.
Yep.
Normal practice, and I would certainly, um, support the, the motion.
Thank you for that, that, um, context.
Also Jen?
Yes.
Um, also as part of the budget committee, it is budgeted for.
Thank you. If that's applicable for, yes, thank you for that context as well.
Let's see, uh, man, excuse me. Uh, I, I just wanted to make clear, it seems to me with your comments that it's, this vote is not a, in a, not a discretionary type of vote. Basically, it's been dictated in the contract itself and the, and the, and the benchmarks have been met. So therefore, you know, it's, uh, it's not a, in my estimation, not a discretionary vote, but following what the contract, you know, the tenants of the contract and and the benchmarks that have been achieved.
That's correct. But it is at the discretion of the committee whether you, you know, the full P R P at $3,000 is provided. That is at our discretion. So what I made, my motion is, is that I recommend that we give the full, um, uh, performance recognition pay. Um, that, as Mr. Hood pointed out, is at the $3,000 amount, quite customary of contracts and what we have awarded Dr. Bailey in the past.
Yeah, but the vice chair has reminded us that the, the funds have already been
That's right, budgeted.
Budgeted, and the budget has been approved, so.
Yes.
So I don't know.
Excuse me, John, can I just chime in there?
John. Yes, go ahead, Sarah.
So, John, it's, um, the $3,000 is in the budget, but again, it's up to. So I, I don't feel it's discretionary because if we felt that $2,700 was more appropriate, we could absolutely do that. So I believe Jen motion for the $3,000, I second it, so I that's where we're at right now. But it is discretionary, right?
My comments are clear that I was supportive of the motion, uh, but basically that I was trying to point out that benchmarks have been met and, and, and the protocols and the, and the contracts, so to speak, are, are there. So therefore, uh, it'd be less of a discretionary if it had not, those provisions not been there. That, that's the point I was making.
Okay. Want to take a roll call vote on this? Uh, Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Skadara?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes.
Wish it passes $3,000.
I just, I just would like to say a few words. Um, in my last newsletter, in our district newsletter, I wrote about that this is, I'm finishing up my fifth year. And I just have to say, it's been an absolute honor and a pleasure to work in this district with the, the outstanding staff, the team that we have put together at central office and at the building level and the teachers that we have, and then of course, our wonderful students and families. I can't think of any other place. I just feel like we've come a long way in five years and I will say, I've not done that alone. We've had a great team effort all five years. Change takes time. I think when I first started, I said, you know, good change is going to take three to five years and here we are. I mean, this past year, our elementary school was recognized at the national level. I'm being contacted to speak at the national level at this point because again, Acushnet is being recognized. So I'm very proud of that, but I want to say it is not just the superintendent alone. I have to give kudos. I feel like my evaluation is for everybody because everybody functions very much as a team in this district. And I know you're not here to see the day in and day out, but if you could see the way the team functions together in the meeting and the caring and compassion for our students and always being so student-centered in what's best for kids, that's what our team is all about and that's why I love working here. So I want to thank you for your time in doing this evaluation. And thank you again for the P R P, it was great. But again, I want to just give a shout out to my entire staff and what they do for all of our kids in this district. And we still have a lot more work to do, obviously, but we will, um, we will.
Well, thank you, Dr. Bailey. And while there's always work to do, um, I think the achievements that we've seen, um, under your leadership and also, you know, leadership is getting your community to also lead, which I think you've done a really good job with your staff and your administrators and you have the best teachers. You know, one of the areas where you exceeded, and I think it should be pointed out, is in the area of district improvement goal number four around, um, how this district rose above and beyond around the COVID pandemic. Our school really was a model district in our, um, the way we went about instruction, um, the way we took safety so seriously. I really feel like our culture improved during COVID and that's, you know, I don't think you can say that for, for all districts, so.
We had a COVID task force, we met weekly. And you know, I know I asked a lot of the, the staff and the teachers and, you know, to ask them to be in front of the computer, in front of the classroom, having kids in front of them, having kids learning from home. We just felt it was so important that our kids get that direct instruction as much as possible versus only half of the week. And I really do believe that that contributed to us having that tremendous growth at the elementary level because of what the teachers were doing. I don't know of too many districts in this area where teachers were teaching to the whole class every day, half at home, half, um, in front of them. And I think our teachers deserve so much credit for that. I am so proud of them and like I said, it's an honor and a pleasure for me to lead this district because of the people and the community. It truly is like a family. I feel like a second mother sometimes to all these people, but it's so true. It's so true. So thank you.
Well, that's ending that on a great note, I think, very exciting. All right, so we'll move on in our agenda to our business manager's report.
Chair President Downing, School Committee, thank you. Newest member, Mrs. Kader, welcome. Last school committee session of, uh, the fiscal year, how about that? I want to say it's been a great year, but I've only been here 10 months. I think I started around the same time as the students, so I'm ready to take off in seven days and have a summer vacation. No, in all seriousness, like, like Mr. Missler said earlier in his, uh, presentation, it feels like now is crunch time, you know? All of us as a leadership team have a lot of great ideas, a lot on the table to, um, make some changes and improvements throughout the summer, um, that, you know, I'm excited for September already to see, you know, everything in action. It, it's going to be great. It has been great so far, but, um, without further to do, I'll hop into, um, my report. So first on the agenda actually is, um, approving the southeastern Massachusetts Educational Collaborative Lease for Fiscal Year 2024. Reviewing the terms, they're essentially the same as last year, um, with a, with a market, um, percent increase on, um, the rental space, uh, rental fees that we would receive. Um, it's space we have available. It's a great working relationship with this collaborative that we do send students to. So I have no issues with anything under this lease. It's a great opportunity for both. I'll let Dr. Bailey speak on that as she's, you know, in action longer than I have, but.
It's been working out great. Um, they rent out, uh, classrooms at the Ford Middle School and it's nice that the students are, um, integrated with our students. It's not like they're in a separate wing by themselves. They're fully integrated, a part of the community, um, and that's the way we want it. The staff is very much a part of the community. And having S M E C as a partner, a true partner with us, has been very, very positive. And I know that our, um, Director of Student Services works very closely with Catherine Cooper, the Executive Director of S M E C. And I know you're going to get to know that board, but it's a great organization and it's, it's been so positive.
Great, so, um, we do need a vote for this. So if I could request a motion, please, to approve the S M E C rental agreement for F Y 24.
So moved.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Skadara?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so moving right along, um, again, it's the, the typical report that you're used to seeing, uh, summary of the F Y 23 spending to date with, um, you know, support in your packets on a line item basis. Um, the biggest piece right now of the school year is our, is our spend down. Um, you know, throughout the year, there's been budget savings through vacancies, um, uh, just, you know, supply savings under spending certain areas. Um, so with that, we've recently met with Budget Subcommittee to map out a plan of this, um, spend down where we will be supporting some, uh, great projects that, and accelerating these projects so that we can, um, you know, stay on a, a good timeline and trajectory for our schools. Um, so with that end of the year spending, I just want to run through some of the, the categories that we will be supporting. A piece of this actually is, is due to, um, the tuition error that was picked up earlier in the year. Where we, there was a miscalculation where we really saved ourselves or the town $218,000. Um, so we recovered that.
Take credit for that.
Yes. Regardless, thank you. Um, that, that $218,000, we, you know, rightfully belongs to the town, um, and has been supported to give back to them. So that's a part of this plan. Moving on to the next category, safety and security. I mean, we've been meeting regularly on this, um, on a leadership level, district level and, and school committee level. Um, there's a, there's a big allotment to spending down, um, some of these funds towards safety and security, which we can talk about more in executive session. Technology, um, Mr. Missler again has, you know, mapped out a timeline for the technology, um, throughout the district to get us caught up to speed and really secure, uh, more than anything and equitable in between, in each, in every classroom. Um, so a piece of this spending will go towards that and help accelerate that process just a bit. Annual town meeting, there was a vote to, to fund our sped stabilization to the maximum that we can. Um, so some of the money will be allotted to that. There's miscellaneous capital projects. DESI defines a capital project as anything over $5,000. So there's capital projects here and there and throughout the schools and grounds, um, where we'll be contributing some funds. And then, um, you know, there's some supplies and materials that we do need to get us through the end of the school year, um, stock up for summer programs, things like that. So that is the spend down plan. With the spend down plan, there's also transfers between these major DESI categories that would be required. In summary, there's a transfer, um, of funds needed for acquisition, improvement and replacement of fixed assets of $310,000. A transfer into the operations and maintenance category of $90,000. A transfer in of the sped stabilization, which does not have a DESI function, but, um, it is money that needs to be moved out of another major DESI category into this bucket, um, for $45,000. And what's funding that is our instruction And what's funding that is our instruction category, which, you know, includes our teacher salaries, again, vacancies, savings, classroom savings on curriculum materials, things like that, where we would be transferring out $445,000. So with that, I would, I would ask for your vote on these transfers.
Okay. If I could request a motion, please, to approve all requests for transfers between the major accounts. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education chart of accounts defines these as the four-digit accounts ending in zero zero, and as presented by Patrick and outlined in the memo in our files.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any questions, further discussion? All right, seeing none. Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Hellcraft?
Yes.
Mrs. Kader?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Moving right along, facilities, so you can see the roof projects missing from here, not completely done. There's a few punch list items, but the spending's done, there's nothing else required from us. Really what this is, is the, the project manager is, you know, holding everybody accountable for these last little tidbits to secure, but we've made great progress, so we're excited about that. And then just overall in the summer, you know, there's a big undertaking by our facilities staff and maintenance staff to get these buildings, you know, they're empty, but now it's time to clean them thoroughly, you know, wax the floors, get everything ready for next fiscal year, or next school year, moving classrooms, things like that, so right now that's, that's the focus in the plan. Heading right into food service, again, meal count, in the month of May, we served 4,010 reimbursable breakfasts and about 13,000 reimbursable lunches. All these numbers, as far as population shares, stay consistent between all the other months of free, reduced, and paid. Right now, there is no update on universal free lunches for next school year, but, you know, we're holding out hope. It's still being discussed, you know, statewide, so fingers crossed on that. And then lastly, transportation, so we rolled out transportation registration at the end of May. We changed the process quite a bit, actually, to a point where I was a little hesitant to see how much, or reluctant to see how much participation we would have. As of this memo, we were up to 340 registrants, and to date, we're up to about 368, so I appreciate the families and the community members that have cooperated and have been willing to accept this change. I think it's going to streamline the process for everyone, it provides a little more insight on whether, what stops they would like to see, and whether they think they're safe or viable for their students, and it lets us get ahead of it so that we can map it out the right way to begin the school year and not change it all in place throughout the fall. So again, you know, it's been successful as far as I can see, and I appreciate, you know, the community's support in that registration process. Any questions, comments, or concerns on the report so far? All right, so moving right along, you know, school nutrition again has been a popular topic, you know, countrywide, particularly, you know, with school committee as well. It's a hot topic, and we've been focusing on it a lot, so I'd like to introduce our new food service director since the beginning of this year, Shelley Mello, and we're going to pull up that presentation that will address many of your questions that you've shared throughout the school year.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, like Patrick said, as putting the presentation together, I addressed as many of your questions as I, as I saw the best I could, and if you have any questions at the end, just let me know, and I'll take care of them then.
Can you put the microphone down a little bit? There you go.
Okay, better.
Got to get closer, Shelley.
Okay, better. Now that's good? No? Okay, this is good.
Shelley's loud, she'll come on.
Yeah, you don't even need this. So again, we'll go over the overview, the questions and concerns, achievements and goals. The overview is Akushanit Public Schools participates in the breakfast program and the National School Lunch Program, the Food and Nutritional Service of the United States Department of Agricultural and Administration of Programs at the federal level, also at the state level, and our administrative state agency which operates through the agreement of the local food authorities. So I know one of your concerns or questions was whether we could do a non-reimbursable meal with, and still be compliant. So to stay compliant, we cannot, we have to stay in the meal patterns, we can't stray out of the meal patterns at all, even if we were to do it as at a different level, the, we would lose our reimbursement, so we have to stay in their meal patterns to receive the reimbursements, even if it was like at a snack level, we couldn't, we could not change the meal patterns. One of the big things in the breakfast and lunch program is student satisfaction. I mean, the students run our program. If they're not satisfied with the meals, it's just like if we go to a restaurant, if we don't like what the menu looks like, we're not going to go back again. If they don't have enough options, we won't go back again, so we need variety for participation. The participation is what drives the program and what gets us our reimbursements. The benefits of the meal, school meal program is the reduction of food insecurity. This, in 2022, the food prices went up 11.4%, and 2023, they're expected to go up another 6.2%. So that being said, along, there's a lot more food insecurity out there than there has been. Improved student health. Research shows that students who participate in the school lunch program have more grains, milk, and fruits than students that do not participate in the school lunch program. And there's fewer distractions in the classroom, I think that kind of goes without being said. If you're hungry, you're not going to be able to focus, and if you're not focused, then you're going to make sure everybody around you can't focus, you're shuffling feet, moving around. Okay. On an average, students who participate in the school breakfast program eat a breakfast of high nutritional quality than the students who eat breakfast elsewhere. Not all students eat breakfast, and those who do have improved foods and increased alertness throughout the morning. So I guess the first thing I'd like to explain is what the meal pattern is. So they have to have fruit, we offer fruit, the grains, you're going to see meat, meat alternative, that's what we're calling protein, and then the fibers and the grains. So all the grains that we serve are whole grain rich, they're served along with fruit and milk, and the fibers, protein, and fats help to slow, when they're served together because of the whole grain rich fibers. The fibers, proteins, and fats help to slow down the digestive system of the carbs and delay the absorption into the blood system. So this is where we won't get spikes in glucose, it wouldn't be like having an energy drink. You might get the same amount of added sugars, but you won't get the same effect because of the way that the fibers, the proteins, and the fats all work together. The breakfast program requirements are as follows on the meal pattern, but there is wiggle room, it's not like we're stuck there. We can substitute fruits with vegetables. Once we've satisfied the one grain of, one ounce of grain, we can substitute proteins, we can get a little bit more flexible than that, we can actually add items, so we can add more protein, we can add more fiber, we can add to, as long as we stay within the calories, the saturated fats, and the sodium, we can add, so we can have a, we can have a grain and two proteins, if that's what you want to have, a meat, a meat alternative, as long as that grain is satisfied, and we stay within the calories, the saturated fats, and the sodium, we can get as creative as we'd like to be with the meal pattern. So when the breakfast first started in 2015, we started that, and it was all packaging, it was a grab and go setup, so it met the meal pattern, we had the grains, we had the fruit, we had the milk that we needed to have for choices, but it was a grab and go, and we've kind of stuck to that model throughout the whole time, the whole time. So we did start with 100% packaging, because a lot of the problem with the breakfast is we have very limited time. There's not a lot of time in the morning, the students at the middle school come in at 7:45 for breakfast, the students at the elementary school come in at 8:45. Most of the staff in the cafeterias come in at nine o'clock, so a big majority of them coming at nine o'clock, so there's not a whole lot of time for, to set up for a breakfast. We have made multiple adjustments, we've taken out French toast sticks, the mini pancakes, the cereal bars, two of the cereals, which had the most added sugar, we've taken out the yogurt, and replaced it with a cheese stick. The yogurt passed the new guidelines, but we thought they would be getting less sugar if we replaced that in the morning, so if they got the cereal and the yogurt, they would get less added sugar with a cheese stick than they with the yogurt. And we took out the chocolate milk. So in the morning, they have two choices of skim milk or regular milk, but they do not, 1% milk, but they don't have the chocolate milk anymore. The other changes we've had is we added a fruit smoothie that we made. The bagels is offered three times a week at each school, so they have that option of a lower, there's only one gram of added sugar in the bagel, so they have that choice more often than they had before. We have the croissant twice a week instead of once a week, it used to be once. And the other thing we did was we put the egg sandwich up against the donuts. The donuts.
You put them up against each other, like, which do you like better, or?
So kind of, if they want the egg sandwich, they can't get the donut, so we were hoping that it would sway them to go towards the other direction, I'll get into that a little bit more. Sometimes things don't work as planned. These changes were made gradually, and it did not affect the participation at all.
Oh, that's good.
Okay. So the next big topic was the proposals for added sugar with the USDA. The USDA had the same concerns as Akushanit School Committee did, that the students were getting too many added sugars. These are just proposals at this point, they're still taking suggestions and questions from the other departments. So the rules come in a two phases. In '25, '26, they want to, the grain-based desserts, which would be the cinnamon rolls, the muffins, the donuts, one a week, so it would be two ounces each week, and there would be one a week. Right now, we've taken out most of them, but we're still at three. We would need to take out two more before '25, '26. So again, we're still way ahead of it. The cereal, the cereal has to be less than six grams of sugar, and we're there. So the only cereal we have in the morning is a cinnamon toast crunch, the other two were seven and eight grams, and they were taken out. So we're, we're at that level already for '25, '26. The yogurt, they want at 12 grams of added sugar, the yogurt that we switched to is at nine grams, so we're already ahead of that. The flavored milk, we took out the chocolate for the breakfast, they want, for the chocolate milk, it has to be under 11 gram, under 10 grams of sugar, and we're at 11, but that's going to be a manufacturer thing, the manufacturers are going to take that 11 gram chocolate milk, switch it to a 10, so it will, it will meet the. The overall limits for '27, '28, they want under 10% added sugar of your total calories, so whatever the added sugar is, you have to be under 10% of that, of your total calories. And the calories for breakfast would be between 350 and 500 calories, so we have to be between 35 and 50 added sugar. We're really not far from there now. We have to take out the donuts. Those darn donuts.
There may be a risk of picking up a school. Five students.
So Akushanit is ahead of the curve. We've, we're compliant, we need to remove two items from the entire, from all their options to be compliant with the '25, '26 proposals. So we're pretty much there. Again, the USDA, they're still taking suggestions, this isn't etched in stone, it's still just a proposal, that many people are concerned, food service directors, manufacturers are concerned about what they're going to be able to sell, how they're going to be able to do it. Nurses, registered dieticians, they have multiple questions. And although we have the same questions, we're pushing forward, we're not wondering how we're going to do it, we're just doing it. Akushanit is, we're almost there. Okay, so the school lunch program. From the start, well, I've been here 20 years, so when I began in 2003, we had two choices, they had a hot choice and they had a cold choice. The cold choice was a bologna sandwich, a ham sandwich on white bread, a soup that was loaded with sodium, and the hot meal. It didn't matter what vegetable you gave them, you could have whatever you wanted for milk, every day they had dessert, they had pudding, they had Jell-O with gummies in it. There were no restrictions. So when it all started, there was no restriction, they had one fruit, and if they didn't like that fruit, that was okay, they didn't have to have it. Now, of course, things have changed, and we've adjusted with those changes. So we now have a variety of changes. While we uphold the standards in the guidelines, we offer one hot meal at the elementary school, and then three cold grab and goes. One being the cereal, one is a chicken Caesar salad, and one is a turkey slider on a whole wheat roll, which seems to be going real good. So the, we reduced some of the options, they did have more at one point, but it just took them to a long detour. So the middle school have more options than the, than the elementary school does, just because too many choices takes too long, and then they don't have any more time to eat. The middle school has one hot option that's served daily, and then four hot grab and go, and four cold grab and go. They have a variety of vegetable and fruit daily, and again, I think the choices are important because you don't know what you're going to want to have, you don't, so this way, everybody has an opportunity to get a meal that's going to satisfy them. The new proposals doesn't do a whole lot for the added sugar for the lunch program. Again, the lunch program right now, their only concern would be the milk, and the chocolate milk is at 11 grams of added sugar, and it would need to be at 10 before '25, '26, and that's going to be a manufacturer thing. Normally, when the USDA does something like this with this much advance notice, it's for that reasons, it's for these industries to get ready and say, okay, the school departments are going to sell a lot of food, and if we don't do something, we're not going to be able to accommodate that. So that's normally why my, there are so many, so many, so much time for the proposals to go through. One of the changes we did make, again, with the school committee's voice being heard about the added sugar, is we changed the yogurt, we make parfaits and smoothies each day for lunch, and we changed that yogurt, so again, the new standard's 12 grams, we're at nine grams.
And I must tell you, when I walk into the classrooms, the kids always tell me that they like the superintendent special, which is that shake that you make, right? Is that what the yogurt?
That's the smoothie, right, so they have lunch for breakfast.
Although I did have one student, again, in voice, ask if you could add whipped cream to it. I'll have to find one with no added sugar. That would be the answer for that.
Okay, so packaging, packaged, specifically to package is something that literally comes in a package, we do nothing to it, but put it in a bag, or we serve it like that. Prepared is anything that we would make a change to, so if we made the egg sandwich, we would put the sandwich together.
to it.
I'll have to find one with no added sugar. That would be the answer for that. Okay, so packaging, packaged, specifically to package is something that literally comes in a package, we do nothing to, but put it in a bag. Or we serve it like that. Prepared is anything that we would make a change to. So if we made the egg sandwich, we would put the sandwich together, just to, just to clarify the, the packaged prepared thing. Limited labor. Again, like I was saying earlier, limited labor is tough in the morning because the students get here almost the same time as, as the staff does. The staff is, so that's where, that's where the biggest problem comes in. To get more involved for breakfast would be, would be a challenge because of, because of the time schedule. The variety of prepared items, prepared breakfast items include the fruit smoothie, the croissant, and those are offered three times a week. And 98% of the lunches are prepared. There's very, very little on the lunch, the lunch menus that are not prepared. Obtaining food supplies has been quite a challenge this year. We've had problems getting mozzarella sticks, getting rice, getting egg patties. We had a month and a half, we couldn't get rice, something that, that we use as our whole grain. With that being said, I've been, I've tried to stay ahead of that. So if I see something, I've called the distributor and said, is there going to be a shortage on that? Can I get? And I'll order enough for two months. So other than, we've had very few menu changes because of the food supply, but it certainly has been a challenge. And we try to forecast the best we can, we get meals in-house the most we can for the menu. We used to make the menu and then order the food and now we order the food, make the menu. Because we're not sure, we don't want a lot of menu changes. We don't want students to think they're going to have one thing and get there and then not. Cause that, just that in itself could cause a student not to eat that day. And we certainly don't want that to happen.
And I just want to interrupt for a second. So these categories, these are the major categories that we boiled the core questions down. Mr. Tebs, you know, unfortunately isn't a part of the school committee anymore, but he sent a very thorough email over to the superintendent highlighting his concerns. You know, what do we offer packaged versus prepared? So that's why you see it as a topic, you know? And are we constrained by labor time? Are we constrained by what's available? So this is us answering those questions, not on a question by question basis, but sort of encompassing each major topic. We're touching on a little bit of everything.
So one of the questions were about distributors. If we could get a different distributor, if we had an item that we wanted to purchase, could we go out and get our own distributor and do that? That's certainly a possibility. So the way you could procure a new distributor is any purchase that's over $10,000, so $10,001. We would have to send out the purchase description and solicit three written quotes to at least three, three different bidders. The award would be given to the, to the lowest bidder and then we'd have to write the contract for that bidder. We could have to do that even if it was one item. So if we were going to buy more than $10,000 of that one item, this would be the process for that. If, if it's under $10,000, you, you can do the award without a written, a written bid. But you still have to share the wealth. So if you're going to buy $9,000 worth of something, you have to split it within three people. You can't just solicit one person that you know or one person that has it. You still have to send out that bid and you have to share that $10,000 amongst anybody that's equitable and can, and will qualify for, for the item that you're bidding for. I hope I made that clear. Not sure if I was.
Are there items in particular that you would be considering doing that more? I might have missed, I think I missed the workshop where we, where we talked about the suggested items, but are we exploring anything in particular?
We're not really. I know Mr. Tebs had, was wondering if he explored further, if this would, would it be an, be an option? And it would be an option if there was a particular item. It was, it would still have to follow in the meal plan, but, but it would be an option if that's, if that's the direction we wanted to go into. We, we do belong to a purchasing consortium or a buyer's group. The benefits of that is we're a small district. So if you get in a buyer's group, we're grouped with these big, big districts, multiple other districts. When they go to, when they go to quote out these prices, they get better prices because it's a larger quantity and we get the better prices as well. The other, the other thing that comes with a buyer's group is the procurement compliance. So the USDA has a lot of compliance roles and that's all done. So as they're doing the bidding and they're doing the procuring, they do all the compliances. So when, when we get audited, we just go on, on their website where all the bids are, all the languages, and we can just pull that for, for the, for the USDA reviews. The other thing that's in the buyer's group is the professional standards. Each one of the, the members of the cafeteria staff have to have so many hours of training. And, and the professional standards will track that for us. I put it in and again, when the state comes, we can just run that and, and we can prove that they've had all the, all their trainings. Networking is another big thing. I mean, we get, have a round table each week with everybody, each month, and we learn menu things. I've brought over breakfast items up too. So, so it gives everybody the opportunity. So being part of that big group is, is certainly helpful. Farm to school. So this year I had the opportunity to get a little bit more involved in farm to school. I just recently had the opportunity to go to a summit in Norwood where all the vendors were. Some of the food hubs are, there was Walden's Meat was there. There was, there was quite a few vendors there that we could reach out to for more farm fresh stuff. We did get a small award for a grant that Mr. McIntosh.
I almost forgot his last name.
You're in apple, you're in apple mode.
Yeah. So, and I think that'll be, it was a small amount, but I think that'll be good to get us going. Cause we, we really don't know. We're new at it. We're new at going farm to school. We can, so this way we can procure them and see what they have and, and see what we can
How, how does that work? Do you, again, you have to specify the kind of items?
You do.
Or do they kind of package items for you?
No, no. So when you, when you make out your procurement papers, you have to specify what you want even like slightly bruised. I mean, if you're going to do an apple, you could say, you'd say, what type of apple, how many apples you want, how many cases you thought you would purchase, and the condition of those apples, the delivery time of those apples. So everything has to be, and if someone cannot accommodate that, then they wouldn't be able to bid on it.
So part of the idea with this, right, is we, I mean, there's a lot of legwork that goes into procuring different menu items that we might want to implement. So change needs to be gradual or we're going to spend all our time in the office trying to get paperwork done and the menu is going to stay stagnant for a year because it took us that long to get it in, to get reliable vendors, to build connections, things like that. So again, it's all gradual, but it's an option. We're getting used to it. We're seeing what we want to build into our menus, whether it be eggs or, you know, local beef or whatever it may be. And then once that menu item catches on, we can commit to it. We can, you know, put the time into procure it in larger quantities and know that it's going to be a staple to our menu. But again, small district, the consortium comes into play heavily where it saves us all that time. I mean, our food director is prepping, spending a lot of time helping prep breakfast. She's out there being the manager. She's serving. So there, there's not a ton of time that is spent sitting down at a desk to go through it, through that. But we are working closely together to, to get, you know, point it in that direction and see what fits for us.
So proteins is the same, when you see the meal plan, it's would be the same thing as a meat alternative. That's what they're going to call it. One of the questions were what proteins we serve. So in the, for breakfast, we have the egg, cheese, we use sunflower seeds, there's sausage and then there's yogurt. For lunch, we have beef, chicken, turkey, ham, cheese, yogurt, sunflower seeds. And in the middle school, we have peanut butter and we're looking into wild butter for the elementary school because that would take care of all the allergy stuff. The milk was a, was a big question, what we could do for a substitute of the milk. So all we can use is fat free, skim or 1%. We can use unflavored, we can use flavored. One of the substitutes was mentioned was the ultra filtered milk, which is higher in protein and it is less added sugar, but it has a non-nutritive sweetener in it. So that would not be allowed with the Massachusetts nutritional standards of, for school foods. There are some milk substitutes that we can use. Most cases it's soy milk. And then the way we could use that is if we, if somebody had an allergy, they would have to get a written statement from a state licensed professional, a physician, and send them for us to be able to still meet our reimbursement and give them an alternate milk.
Do they, do they, almond milk, is that an option?
Almond milk is not an option. It is an option, but it doesn't need all the qualifications of what the USDA want. So in most cases it's soy. There are a bunch of different options, but we would not be meeting our, our standards. Production records. So production records are used, I use them a lot to project waste, to prepare for meals. We see what we sold last time, you know what we're going to sell the next time, what the kids liked, what the students didn't like. Accuracy of ordering. If I have an idea of what I'm going to use, I'll know what to order. The trends that I noticed is I did, by the end of March, so one of the breakfast items were removed and the pros and cons of removing those. We did, the, one of the changes we made at the elementary school was we took one of the options out because it was taking them so long to get through. So they used to have three options. We brought that down to two and we opened another register. So I go in, run over every morning and do the second register while one person serves. And this way we can get the students through faster. So that did build up the, the participation by 15 to 20 breakfasts a day in, in just that one school. The change also increased the amount of doughnuts that were sold. 50% on an average of, and, and from 50% on an average to 61%. So the doughnuts is still an issue. I'm still going to work on it. They, they leave the standards and even with the 25, 26 proposals, if that does go through, they get one of those options a week. That would be something that would still, we could still accommodate that and, and meet the requirements of the 25, 26 proposals. The participation is not better on the days that the doughnut is sold. The participation stays the same throughout the week. Actually, they like the chocolate chip muffin just as much and that's not added sugar. So I'm not sure. The most popular breakfast item is the, is the chocolate chip muffin. With the changes stated above and served with the cereal and the cheese sticks, the sales increased approximately 52 to 64%. The chocolate milk was removed and since it was removed, milk is reduced by 10%. So they're not taking as much milk, but they're not getting, nobody is getting 11 grams of sugar, added sugar in their breakfast before they even start eating. Menu options. So the importance of menu options, I know that one of the concerns was there was too many, many options. And again, my concern with not, menu options, not all the, the students are going to want the same foods. Some are going to want hot meals, some are going to want cold meals. The menu options, multiple menu options result in a higher participation. If you have more for them to choose from, you're going to get more students that come in. The supply chain issue sometimes makes a difference in the, in the menu. So if they have options and they come in and it's not what, they have so many other options they can, they can turn to besides that one. Options are a key to the participation and the participation is where we get all our reimbursements from. That's what drives the program. Years ago, there were fewer, there were fewer options, but the participation didn't stay the same. You would see one day we'd sell a lot, the next day we wouldn't. So reimbursements, reimbursements is a, a large chunk of where our money comes from. The funds are used not only for school supplies, but for equipment repairs, new equipment, staff wages and, and many other. Taste testing. I really want to get more into taste testing this year because I think that's, that's the key to changing menus. You don't want to put a, a new item on the menu and have a student not want to try it because if they don't like it, do they go up and ask for another item or do they just not eat that day? So to, to add it to a menu, I think is, is not the best way to get students to try new things and we want them to try new things. So I have contacted a few distributors. There's distributors that will come in and do taste tests. We can do taste tests on our own. We can advertise a taste test and give them samples and then let them vote on it. You know, they can tell us what they want on their menus. So I'm, I'm looking forward to doing more taste testing this, this upcoming year. And education for school meals and nutrition. There's nothing available at this time right now at the elementary school. The middle school and health class is based on the Massachusetts standards. So the students learn about making food choices that support the growth and development, maintain their overall health and wellness, and reduce the risk of illness and future diseases. So that's all going in the curriculum of the, of the health class at the middle school. The cafeteria, we have signage. One year or a couple of years, actually, I did a kitchen tour that I thought was really good because we taught them what the grains do and what the proteins are for. So not so much telling them, you have to take that and you have to take that, but what it does. And they did get involved. So I think maybe that would be something for us to get back to. It was almost like a field trip for them. They came through the kitchen and, and, and they were kind of surprised at some of the stuff they were eating that they didn't know where beans were getting in. So I think maybe that's something the cafeteria will get back to.
And then school nutrition fund. So we all know, you know, we have a, a pretty penny sitting there in our school revolving End of the day, we, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves with the spending on it. DESI holds a district guidelines, actually, where you're limited to carry over three months worth of your expense. Right now, our monthly expense is about $50,000 on average. So we'd be able to, you know, hold a steady balance of $150,000 in the school lunch revolving account at any time, you know, to be compliant. What's going to happen is they're going to require us to come up with a spending plan because we exceed that amount right now. I, I provided a, our profit and loss to date that we submit to DESI quarterly in, in some of your attachments and you can see our figures there. I mean, we're in the black about $120,000 just this year. So what does that mean? Again, that means we come up with a spending plan. It's not go through your money at whatever you can think of because it seems like a good idea now. It's how can we sustain this? How can we sustain the equipment? How can we, you know, you know, keep our employees? How can we improve our food quality consistently? Not just now, forever. Equipment hasn't been replaced in our cafeterias. Two ovens that we're looking at replacing to, to get up to the standards and streamline things and gain labor efficiencies, $50,000 an oven. So there's an eighth of the money we're talking about. Freezers need some work, another $100,000, another eighth. What else do I have in my notes here? Some steamers need to be replaced, you know, easy $50,000. So it's going to go quick, but we need to be responsible. We need to come up with a timeline. We're going to work on an inventory of our products. We're not going to replace it all at once because guess what? In 10, 15, 20 years, when it all breaks down at the same time, this money's not going to be there. We're going to have our three months expense allowance and we're going to be banging at the town's door for, for funding support. So it, it's a marathon, not a sprint. And we're working closely on mapping that out, coming up with a budget we're comfortable with. With COVID, even just the participation numbers and the reimbursement numbers were skewed significantly. So now that things are normalizing, we needed to see what our patterns look like and build off of that. So that's where we are at with, you know, what looks like a pot of gold really isn't so much. It could be spent in, in weeks of time, but it needs to be spent responsibility, responsibly so that we can sustain our program.
So that plan that you guys are working on, be presented in the next school committee meeting, right? For the, for the school?
Maybe not the next, but when it's in place, we definitely want to present it. Without getting into the weeds, Shelley's, you know, calendar contract limits her to a certain amount of days, that there isn't much summer work for her to participate in. So we're going to work around that and see what we can come up to, you know, to work towards it, but, you know, think, again, I'll keep patting Mr. Missler on the back. Think of the tech plan. We envision something similar to that. We need to know what equipment we have, how old it is, what's worth replacing now versus later, and then, you know, map out a timeline that, that makes sense. And again, with equipment, we're responsible for all the same procurement laws. It's not just going shopping at a grocery store for food and items, or, you know, going to Best Buy and buying equipment, or hopping on Amazon. We're talking big dollars here and spending on equipment, so it's going to take some time to do it the right way. So I mean, I just, I breezed through the equipment section there, too, so we'll hop right into the staffing.
Did you have a comment to share?
Yes, I have. Several, but I agree. First of all, I, on the type of staffing, as far as starting in the morning, you know, like, you know, it's very difficult in preparation.
Right.
And I think your comments, you know, well taken, and I think that the budget, Patrick, the budget committee should basically take a look at that, you know, to alleviate that issue. The second is, is there enough time for youngsters to really participate in the, in the nutrition program? In this sense, is there enough time for the youngsters to eat and relax and go on? You know, or is it, you know, everybody's rushed in and out? And do you know how many minutes they have? This discussion is by, a national discussion. I'm picking up from, you know, from what I-
Right, it is a national discussion, it's something that has been discussed, but being in the building, I don't, I don't see that they need more time. I think more time would be more chaotic. That's from my, from my view. I go through the cafeterias, I see what's going on, and I think if you gave them too much time, you would have more problems.
Because after, from a teacher's point of view, too?
Right.
Yes, but also, when I wrote curriculum, back in the days when we didn't have, we had to, that the nutrition, you know, food program was looked upon as a learning experience, emotional well-being experience, especially younger children. And so, and I don't know if, you know, the preparation, the food, is, you know, a, just meeting their nutritional needs, but not necessarily some emotional needs. Food is a very, you know, connection, you know, for emotional development, as some of us know. Also, a learning experience, you know, as far, you know, is immeasurable as far as socialization, verbal development, you know, working with each other and with the staff. So I just, tossing these ideas out, that we're looking at the nutrition program, that what we can maybe look to design to, and that's basically, but I, as far as, you know, the question you've answered about maybe, you know, I would think about extending the school day if we, if there might be, you know, not enough time, you know, for a good program.
I can tell you with our program that there's a lot of socialization happening. When I go around in the cafeteria, if a younger student doesn't know how or just can't open up something, the friend is very quick to offer to help them, which I love to see. We do lunch bunch groups with our counselors. So the time around the lunchtime is a really important social time for our students, and it is happening. I know at the middle school, they have a choice a lot of times of where they're sitting with their friends. Sometimes the adults manipulate that based on behavior, but I do think, you know, I don't believe in a quiet lunch. I mean, as adults, we all get to talk when we eat. It is a very social time. The kids are learning skills during lunchtime, like you said, language development, how to open things up, how to socially be appropriate during, while they eat, throwing their trash away, things like that. So it is, it is a very worthwhile time in our schools.
Thank you. We, as school committee people, don't have the same experiences you have as far as participating, you know, observing and so forth.
Listen, I would invite you, if you ever wanted to come in and see the lunch program in action, you would be more than welcome. You could schedule a time with me, and I know that Mrs. Mello would, would love that. She would welcome you with open arms, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But you got the open it?
That's, yes. We said lunch.
You have to try this different tenant special. No whipped cream. But anyway, it is, you're always welcome to come in and see that in action.
The point I'm making about the, the time factor as far as staff, your preparation, so you can get the day going in a very orderly way, and I think we should, we should look at that. I, I get a suspicion, Patrick, that when we're talking about the state budgets, and whether they're going to, you know, continue with the free lunch or not, you know, there's a division between the Senate and the House. But if they turn, if the Senate has a way, a way, their way, I got this feeling that they want to take what money they, they would allocate for the food program and just put it into chapter, you know, chapter seven, you know, for reimbursement, and allow the local communities to spend the money as they see fit. And whether, whether, you know, funds may not be earmarked for school lunch, but we should take that into consideration. And I think that we should basically communicate that, you know, keep communications with the intent of the legislation, and what, and whether we follow through, rather than having just a very, very tight saying, okay, that's not in the reimbursement level, so therefore we don't, we don't add, you know, that. It may be all, some of those funds may be built in with the chapter seventy reimbursement, you know, at our local discretion. So I just want to toss that out to you, Patrick, as far as-
Yeah, I just had to sense that, you know, we'll wait and see what happens, but it's not, it doesn't necessarily mean it's the end of the line for free meals. There's two provisions that exist right now that allow for free meals for students, and that's the community eligibility provision and provision two. It would be at our afforded costs, but if that's, you know, the direction that we would want to stick with to ensure participation, you know, equitable access to food, things like that, we can cross that bridge when we get there. And again, that plays into the spending. So it's all, it's all a big puzzle that we have to put together.
Great. Are you, did you have anything more with this staff? I just want to keep up with a little time here.
The staffing, basically, I can breeze right through it. It's tough for, for the staff that we have. Most of the people that commit to working in school food services because they have children at home, they have commitments before and after. So, so that's where it's tough, adding the labor, and it makes it challenging to add new breakfast items. That would, that would be more prepared than packaged.
Given the circumstances, you're being smart about, you know, thinking about, you reduce the choice, you're going to get things moving quicker, and it sounds like what you, those small changes have actually increased efficiency. That's what I'm hearing.
I think it's been a nice team effort, I have to say. Between the school committee, between the nutrition department, the business manager, just, it's been a nice respectful conversation, and we have worked together, which is what we're here for, to make it a better program for our kids. So I want to thank you for everything.
Yeah, you're doing an excellent job, and I'm really looking forward to seeing, after you have some time to map out that budget, and seeing like, what, what do we have to play with in terms of maybe the introduction of new options? You know, balancing that obviously with the equipment needs that are needed. And so, thank you for your work on this, this is excellent.
Excuse me, Jen?
Yes.
I do have multiple questions, but I'm going to save them and put them in an email.
Okay.
Or maybe we can have a workshop for the sake of time.
Sure.
But I do want to say, you know, one comment, that I really feel like our school district, and I know everybody's doing an amazing job trying to really get the kids to eat the food, however, I feel like this should be more parent-based. Do you know, for my kids, they would go to McDonald's every single day, and they're, they're not allowed, I don't allow it. So they're, they're eating the salads, they're eating the healthy foods, and I feel like our cafeteria needs to help with that. I think if the parents had a survey of what their kids should eat, they will see that it's not a ton of donuts, it's not a ton of muffins, it's none of that. So I just think that we should maybe just have a more parent-focused cafeteria than a kid-focused, and again, this is just my opinion. And also to say that so many kids in our district, and again, maybe we should survey this, eat at home, and this is their second meal, you know, when it comes to the breakfast. And for lunch, I know many kids, because it's free, are eating the school lunch because it's just easier for the parents. But if that changes, I'm thinking that you're going to have a lot of kids not buy lunch anymore. It's just because it's been free for the past couple of years, and I could be wrong, but I'm just throwing it out there.
So our participation is, is higher while it's free, but it's not extremely higher. We might do forty meals extra in the elementary school of five hundred and sixty students. We might do forty extra meals than what we did before.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah, that's it, yeah. And the, and the middle school is pretty much the same thing, it's maybe a twenty-five meal difference between free and before.
I'd like to see the parents survey on what they think their kids should be eating, just so we can get an idea for them, because in my experience, as a parent, if my children are starving, they're going to eat something. They're not going to go without. So that, and that's just my two cents. So again, I'll put together my, my comments and questions, and I'll send them to you, Jen, for you to, to where you will with them.
Okay, that's great. And I, and I think it has been a really good dialogue, and we can continue it, so maybe we can always have another workshop.
The parents already get, of my school blocks, they can see what the students are getting now, where in the beginning they couldn't. So now, the parents can go on and see exactly what that child ate, if they ate.
That's right.
What they didn't eat.
That's right, they can, yeah.
So I did address the, the parents' concerns the best I could in that aspect.
Okay.
So we quickly just go as though the achievements and goals, I think we touched upon them throughout the presentation, but they're in the slides for your, your review anyway. You know, I second what everyone said here. I commend the school committee for their interest in the topic and the amount of work that Shelley's done to investigate and compile information and try to educate, as well as continue to be a learner herself. She's teaching me every day, you know, I'm helping her, but it is a cohesive team, I'd say, between these three groups, and I really appreciate that. And again, it's clear the work's not done. I mean-
Yeah. We're trying to change a big system. It takes time to make these changes, but I think this is how it starts.
We have to go slow to go fast, right?
Yeah, no, this is good, I think, really good progress, and we will continue to make progress, it sounds like.
We will.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. You did a fantastic job. It was a really great presentation. Thank you. All right, where did we end here? We're at the end of our agenda, almost. Want to give an opportunity to school committee members, if you have any reports out to the public or anything? Sarah, I don't know if you have anything to add in terms of a report back?
No, I just, I wish, everyone has a happy and safe summer vacation, and I appreciate all the staff and administration and school committee members that have put so much time and effort throughout the school year to, to move us in the right direction, and I look forward to continuing our, our direction in a positive way, and hope for a great next year.
Great, I agree. And again, I'd like to welcome you, Melissa, to our committee. We're looking forward to working with you. Any other comments before we move on?
I have one comment, and I meant to raise it during the personnel report. Do you issue or develop, even submit to the Department of Education as far as a comprehensive annual personnel report? In the sense of how many staff we have, why, you know, how many have left, reasons for leaving? So we have a complete breakdown. I'd like, as a school committee member, would like to know how many staff people we have, and what they're doing, and what, you know, and titles and so forth. And I wonder if you have to submit one of those to the Department of Education.
So it's not a comprehensive, it's not as comprehensive as what you just described, but they certainly have our numbers of staff. I know that Mr. Missler and his department, they, every month when he talks about the data, that's part of it, that they know our number of staff. You can go to our, the DESI website and actually see the number of FTEs we have. We certainly have it outlined in our budget, the number of FTEs we have.
You have to search.
Right. But we don't communicate to DESI about why somebody left, for example?
It does, just so I have that information, we do, we do law that information in Aspen, so it does get reported. It does get reported as far as if they left for personal reasons, retirement, or education, or other reasons outside of education.
So there's categories, but there's not specifics?
I'm looking, for example, if we, if looking at, you know, comprehensive personnel reports that turn that if, that it would help us maybe on employee retention, if we're finding that there's, there's an issue, people instead of retiring, you know, are going somewhere else, I'd like to know how many people have retired each year.
I will say, since I've been here-
It gives us a scope of where we're going, that's what I'm saying.
We have excellent retention of our teachers, excellent. We don't have a lot of turnover, people tend to stay in the district for a long time. We have had some retirements, we had, had people who live far away, and they try to move closer to where they live, which is understandable, but there's not, overall, it's been a very consistent staff.
So I just would say, if, I would appreciate, and if there's, you know, any problem in doing, we put in a formal motion, but I would have to develop the, you know, what we'd be looking for. But I'm sure if those reports are available, that they make them available to the school committee.
And I would, I think we've talked about this before in terms of like-
Yes, we have.
Exit reports, so I agree with Mr. Hockcraft. It would be helpful, I think, to the committee, and again, we don't need to get into, you know, individual by individual reasons. It's more about trends and themes, and to Mr. Hockcraft's point, if we are seeing people leave, what some of those themes may be, and how do we address them, if possible, so.
Yeah.
And maybe we can just establish a cadence of when we would see those reports, whether it's end of the year, or if it's, you know, halfway through the year, or whatever.
So we, since we've talked about it, we have been tracking in my office some of that, that information, and we just, we're waiting until the end of the year, so that we can get that information together over the summer, so at the beginning of the year, we can look back. Because that's when we see a lot of, not a lot, but we see more transition at the end of the year and at the beginning of the year, people coming in, people going out for various reasons. So we are compiling that information that was asked for before, so that is coming. And if you want more data from the technology side of things, I'm sure that I could talk to Mr. Missler about what he could provide to the committee as far as staffing.
That's great. All right, there are some communications noted there. Just want to point out the AES newsletter and FMS newsletter, really great sources of information about what's going on in the school, so those are there noted for the committee. We do have executive session this evening. We will not be returning now, though, because we did address the one point, right, that we would have needed to return for. So we are moving into executive session to discuss security, personnel, or devices, to discuss recommendations regarding safety and security of the audit that we have done, votes may be taken, and also to discuss the approval of the executive session minutes of May ninth, 2023 not to be released. So if I could have a motion, please, to conclude our public meeting this evening, so that we can move into executive session.
Make that motion. So move.
Okay. Thank you. And-
Call?
Yes.
Mr. Hough?
Yes.
Mr. Hockcraft?
Yes.
Mrs. Gader?
Yes.
Mrs. Downey?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and for the public's knowledge, our next regular school committee meeting will be held here in the John Tavari-
our next regular school committee meeting will be held here in the John Tavares Library at 5:30 PM on August fifteenth. So see you then.